Hey, at this time, I'm going to call our first meeting of the board. So for Hema, there was a written notice and the official bulletin. And also email sent to Rowan County Times and Courier Post. And we filed written notice with the clerk of Mount Holly Township. Please stand up. The pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our.
Here. Ms. Yadi, here. Ms. Michinski, here. Mr. Popka, present. Thank you. The board's code of ethics is on your agenda that you could have picked up on your way in as well as on the school's website. We're going to go straight to presentations. Misses again. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Mount Holly Township's budget presentation for twenty-three, twenty-two, four.
Thank you, Rob. Thanks. So for the upcoming school year, we have a budget fund balance of two million. A projected increase in the local levy of two percent, which is equivalent to about eight point seven million dollars. An increase of state lead, about fourteen million in state lead. Misselaneous revenue, sixty-nine thousand. We're withdrawing two point eight million dollars from our capital reserve account for projects that we're doing this summer, including an elevator fall out, Holbein auditorium ringing, Holbein auditorium renovation. And then we also have the basketball renovation here at Holbein as well. We have withdrawn from maintenance reserves for some maintenance issues that we have in district. And we have special revenue, anticipated revenue of about three point seven million. And those are grants from the federal government. And then our debt service. Debt service is four hundred and sixty-seven thousand. And that's from a referendum that was passed about twelve years ago. So the total. So the total budget for the upcoming school year is approximately thirty-two million. I wanted to share the bank cap. We had eighty-three thousand from three years ago that has expired that the board did not feel need to utilize. This year, we generated a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in bank cap. That's due to we had an enrollment adjustment, an increase in healthcare costs, which generated a hundred and seventy-one thousand that we will use in future years if necessary. But the board decided to carry that over into future years. So next year, the board can use five hundred and ninety-four thousand in bank. This year, as you can see, in twenty twenty-three, the property values in Mount Holly have increased five point nine million dollars, which is excellent for the taxpayers. So that's fantastic news. And here we have the past ten years of levy history. You can see that the board has stayed within or even below the twelve, the two percent increase, except for the seventeen, eighteen year. They had to go above. But besides that, you can see eighteen, nineteen, there was no increase. Nineteen twenty, there was twenty twenty-one, there was a minimal increase. And the remainder did get pushed to bank cap, which the board did not utilize. Last year, there was an increase in this year as well. And so how does this affect the taxpayer in the town of Mount Holly? Assuming that the average assessed home is a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, the average taxpayer will pay a hundred and eight dollars for this year from last year. And that includes the general fund, which is a two percent of twenty-nine dollars, and debt service, which is an increase of seventy-nine. These are our projects that I spoke about earlier in the presentation. Elevator, the basketball here at Holbein, the auditorium ringing, the auditorium renovation. And then we also have replacing a few items, like the rooftop unit and chiller here at Holbein and the mixing valve at Green.
Any questions? At this time, if the public has any questions, you may ask them. Those, please stand, state your name, tell us where you're from. If you have a question.
Hello, Louis Lopez, ninety eleven, try Mount Holly, New Jersey. So no increase this year, right?
There's a, yes, there is a two percent increase this year.
Okay, it's all be.
The budget year that we're talking about.
Okay. In the future budget, it's all be not have any funding? Like according to twenty-three to twenty-four? You think that? This year you have funding, why not for next year?
Do we have state funding?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
We do. Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
I'd like to want to make sure.
Okay.
You're welcome.
So I just want to, can I, can I add something?
Yes, absolutely.
So next year, we have a, I believe it's a million dollar grant from the state at SunTrust. So we don't ever have those funds. And we don't know what's going to happen politically. So we don't know whether or not our state funding is going to go down, stay even, or we're lucky enough to get extra money like we did this year. So the reason that we did go up, you noticed we did not raise last year. The reason we didn't raise this year is because we're very concerned about losing that million dollars next year. And we actually have more money for the state.
Can I have one more comment, do you mind?
Let me just ask, does anybody else have any questions about the budget?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there going to be a more detailed budget breakdown available anywhere for the public to look at?
The advertised budget is on the website. It was posted in the newspaper two weeks ago. And then within forty-eight hours, the user-friendly budget will be posted on the website.
You're welcome. So do you have something else you want to say?
We just, we're trying to thought.
Oh, you're like me, I always constantly losing my thought.
I'll take first, we got. Oh, yeah, I do, I do, I just came up. How much funding do you get from Mount Holly Township?
From the township or local levies, I don't know.
From, from Mount Holly, right? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody else have any questions? None, or it's your turn? These going to get replaced with the auditorium and all of that? These, yes. I think it's. Is in our physical hands now?
No, well, we could do that in our general fund, these aren't.
Okay, okay. I also wanted to point out, because I know that all of this doesn't make sense to everybody, because why push maybe three years? I guess, digging deep, I have a hard time understanding. The money that comes out of the capital reserve, you should make sure I'm using the right words.
Got it.
Can only be used on big projects like the auditorium. That doesn't affect the day-to-day budget, if you will. That's separate money. And if we look out and have extra money in the budget, then we can put some of that in capital reserve. But it's like we have a savings account that is meant just for capital projects. So that's why those, so taxes aren't going up because we're doing the auditorium. The auditorium is doing, is being done because our BA, our team are so good at it. Maybe should we have money in that little savings account? I should point that out.
Well done.
That you were. They can only have so much money in them. And then the state's like, whoops, that money doesn't actually cause any work. At this time, I have a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school district budget. I'll let you. Second. And a roll call, please.
Ms. Banks?
Yes.
Ms. Yadi?
Yes.
Ms. Michinski?
Yes.
Mr. Popka?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next presentation.
I'm actually going to switch the order because Ms. Pierce has a presentation and we're trying to get up on the screen. But I would like to introduce to the board TSO Consulting. So we have Tanya Breland and Erica Lee here today. And their discussion, they just want to talk to you about the student voice that we have mentioned before. So that starts next week. So they're going to provide you with the framework for that. So without any further ado, I present to you TSO Consulting. I'm going to give you a microphone, just because our listeners that room. Be able to carry you. Watch out there, okay? There you go.
I'm Tanya Breland. I'm Erica Lee. And I also want to introduce two of our team members who will be actually doing the work for the student voice.
Hi, my name is Douglas Stoneman. I'm acting principal of Thomas Sharp Elementary and College of New Jersey. Prior to that, I was assistant principal at the high school for about a hundred years. My name. For State Farm Insurance, been there for over twenty-five years. And actually, I've done some volunteer work here at Holbein, some of the, with the mentor program.
Thank you. So we just wanted to share a little bit about what we're going to be doing. So we had an opportunity to meet with the superintendent, who shared this initiative with us, and then we presented a proposal. Ultimately, we're looking to help students to be able to develop leadership skills and to develop their voice. And that gives them an opportunity to be able to advocate for themselves. And also to be able to advocate for their peers or areas that they see they would like, where they would like to see change. So that's kind of like the overarching idea about the student voice program. But I wanted to give Doug a little bit more time to just kind of walk you through what it will look like. In terms of week to week, the program will be a five-week program. Students will be after school for one hour. And in that time, they will have, it will be very interactive for them. They've been selected by the superintendent, and I guess you can share more about that selection process. And then as students get together, by the end of the program, ideally, they should be ready even to propose some ideas for change that they would like to see. And I think it'll be a really exciting program for students as they participate in it. But I will allow Doug to just kind of share a little bit more specifics about the program with you.
Thank you. So, you know, the idea of student leadership is, really strikes with me. I've been doing this for a long time, as far as the high schools are concerned, the high schools. Nolan Burlington, I was there prior to that, prior to Nolan Burlington, I was at Nolan Burlington. In every district, there was some type of leadership program that I was involved in as far as the students were concerned. At the high school, for Nolan Burlington and for Collingwood, it was, we called it the senior leadership program, right? The reason why we had the word leadership is because actually on their transcripts, it helps. It gives them an opportunity to speak about the types of leadership, types of things that they did in the high school, in the community, right? So it was very helpful to have that in the name of the class that they were taking. All right, so I know, I understand that it is for the middle school here. But the bottom line is practice is practice is practice. Anytime you're talking about leadership, we know that the opportunity for practice is limited, especially in schools, if, if we're not actively trying to create that, right? So the idea of having middle school leaders is huge because it starts their morale. Then they go into the high school, you know, with some of these jewels as far as, you know, the, the types of leadership skills that you need to develop. So with that being said, our, the, the program that, or the training that we're, that I'm doing, that we'll be doing, Mr. Lee and I, you know, it's modeled after a lot of what we've been doing as far as the leadership programs and, you know, the districts that I work with. All right, so there's five sessions. And every week, there's a different, I, I call it jewels, but it is a different skill, you know, that students are going to be working with. You know, we're going to be working on trying to create a project that the students are interested in doing, you know, towards the end. Something that they have chosen to do for the district, and that may be for their school. That may look like something in the school that they've identified that needs work, something in the community that they've identified that needs to be addressed, that they'd like to address. Once again, it's going to come from them as to what it is that they're interested in doing for the school or for the community, or something that's important to them. A lot of times, students start with things that they see, you know, such as bullying or harassment or something like that, which is fine. So what kind of program can we put together, you know, with you in charge or with you, you know, at the forefront, trying to help, you know, assist the building, assist the school, assist the community? Okay, so the way it's going to look, we're going to have a, week one, we're going to start with character, right? So you have, you know, what's character, what does that look like to you, why is that important? And so we're going into some details as far as opportunities for them to practice. You know, why, you know, have strong character matters as far as a leader is concerned. What leaders can you identify, you know, with certain character traits that you're impressed with? So, you know, those are conversations that we get to have with the students. When they come in, we'll be talking about, you know, we'll give them an overview as far as the entire five weeks are concerned. But it will be an opportunity to go into practice with certain things. We'll have opportunities for them to take a look at some videos that, you know, you know, speak to what character looks like, strong character looks like, what certain leaders, you know, what certain leaders have that stands out as far as strong character is concerned. You know, in these training sessions, we'll do things that, let me see. We'll ask them, you know, a lot of different questions about what kind of school do you want? What type of influence do you want to have? What kind of impact do you want to have in your own building? That's week one. Week two, and then, you know, again, we start off with icebreakers too. You know, it'll be introduction to icebreakers as far as, you know, why is that important? If it's something that we want to, as far as this leadership program, have students work with younger students, then we will work on how that's going to look and what that means as far as being able to help, you know, the younger students in your building. As far as week two is concerned, your voice, taking personal inventory of, of, of what it is that it means to, you know, to have integrity, you know? So as far as your voice is concerned, well, again, we'll start off with icebreakers. We have a, something that I'm considering a vent notebook. So with our senior leaders, every time we have a class, they are able to vent and talk. And I say vent, meaning, you know, our senior leaders work with freshmen, you know, as far as helping them transition to the building. But every time we have this class, we have to come in and give them an opportunity to actually talk about what works, what doesn't work. It's during that conversation with the advisor that they're able to learn what actually works, what are some of the traits that they put into the different types of opportunities to work with freshmen? What works, what doesn't work? How can we make it better? Students can also feed into that, you know, and give each other, you know, an opportunity to, to help figure out the things that work, the things that don't work. So with this, we'll be doing, you know, the exact same modeling, you know, in these training sessions. Students will come in, we'll do icebreakers, we'll talk about, you know, how your week was. And then we'll talk about, you know, as far as your week was concerned, what are some of the things that you saw in your building that you enjoy, what are some of the things that you want to work on in your building? And then we'll talk about things that, you know, interactions with other students, what works, what doesn't work, how do we make it better? Week three, we're talking about, you know, the true reflection of who you are. Once again, it starts off with icebreakers. We'll do, you know, vent notebooks. And, and then that particular, you know, objective, who are you really? And we get a chance to, again, you know, just uncover some things that, you know, the students have an opportunity to talk to each other, talk to us, and we'll help them, you know, kind of figure out, once again, as a leader, what it is that you're trying to, you know, accomplish and your comfort level as far as being a leader is concerned. The activities that we have are a lot of different, you know, ways for them to practice leadership. Every week, there'll be activities, there's a lot of ways, different goals that we're going to, you know, be setting for them. They'll have an opportunity to talk about that as well. All right, as far as week four is concerned, the goal is leaders develop values and principles to live, I'm sorry. Leaders develop values and principles to live by and set, atone for others. Once again, icebreakers, vents, you know, they get a chance, you know, opportunity to talk about what's been going on for the week for them. In today's discussion, you know, they will be talking about, you know, what do you do as far, what is value to you? What is important to you as far as value is concerned? Opportunities to talk about intolerance within your, in diversity, as far as your building is concerned. We'll give them that, we'll talk about that. And what is your line? You know, that's another big one as far as students are concerned. You know, where do you draw your line within your building and what's important to you? So again, it's another opportunity for them to practice, talk, understand, you know, what their voice is and what it sounds like when they're stepping up and trying to help out within your building, within your community. For that last week. That last week, week five, leaders' personal network is his or her emotional fuel. They'll talk about who they have as their network, you know? And as far as a leader, why is that important? Why is it important to have certain people around you? Who have you identified that works for you to help you be a stronger individual? Once again, leaders have strong people around them, and why is that important? So we get a chance to talk about that. Some of the projects that I've outlined within, you know, this particular pack that I have, gives them an opportunity to, to think about how they want to, you know, present themselves within their school. So they get to create a documentary, if this is something that I'm interested in doing, and I get to go into detail as to what that may look like. But the documentary of who you are, and the theme is diversity, tolerance, we are one. That's a, that's just, you know, a different type of project. Other projects that I have, if, I, I'll go over it with the students, but, you know, it's, we talk about, you know, their social media. You know, if this is something that they're interested in doing, why is it important to clean up your social media? You know, you as a leader, does it reflect who you are, you know, as a, as an individual? So take a look at that. These are projects, again, that students really enjoy, but, you know, some of them are like, well, you know, my social media is fine, but I'd much rather pump out more positive messages for my school. So that, those are things that, you know, we've seen happen. But once again, there's a lot of different things that I have on here as far as ideas are concerned. But that's pretty much what the five weeks will look like. You know, students come in, we do icebreakers, we talk, we talk about the different types of things that we can show them. The only thing I'll add is, so Doug's focus is, is a lot about the characteristics that make up a good leader. And so where I come in, I do a lot of work with enterprise change management. And so everybody loves the concept of transformation, but people really don't like change, right? And so where I'll come in is I will kind of help the students identify how they can affect change. And we talk about advocacy, they have to have these characteristics. We also need the tools to be able to figure out, well, what's the actual problem? Let me not attack the person, let me figure out what the problem is. And let me see how we can go about it in a constructive way to bring about change. And so as we talk about these characteristics, and we talk about these traits, and what's important, we'll connect that to, okay, now how can we actually take some action? Is it skill versus will? Do we have the ability to do this, or do we have the desire to do this? And does the district have the ability to do this, or do they have the desire to do this? And if we can, you know, develop our approach based on that. So hopefully, by the end of this, it's only five weeks, and they're in middle school. So we have to, you know, manage our expectations. But our goal is to kind of plant some seeds so that they can become better leaders and be better advocates for themselves and their peers, so they can be changed in their, in their local community.
The only thing I'll add is how excited we are about this, super excited. TSO Consulting, we do a lot of work in diversity, equity, and inclusion space. And we work a lot with leadership and staff. We are super excited about the opportunity to work with students because very often, when we talk about systems change, we very often miss them. And so we're really excited about the opportunity for them to really discover their voice and their sense of agency and advocacy. So we'll end there and see if there are any questions.
Um, what is, two questions. What is the grade band that you're going to have here in school? And is there a cap? How many students can?
Seventh and eighth grade, and we believe there will be no more than twenty students.
Oh, sorry. My question is more around the selection process.
Yeah, so this goes back before spring break. I sent out a Google form in their Google classroom, and it was almost like an application to apply for it. I first spoke to seventh and eighth graders in an assembly, told them that about the opportunity, and then I moved out of the form for them to sign up. So this Friday, I'm going to go into the cafeteria, and I'm going to recruit some more people. But, you know, the, the overall all goal here was to get students involved, right? And like, you know, you have your students that are in National Junior Honor Society, they're involved. You have your athletes, they're involved. And a lot of times, students lose their voice because of what group they are in. So this is an opportunity for them to, you know, have an opportunity to lead, right? So I chose seventh and eighth grade strategically because our eighth graders are able to articulate, especially as they're walking out the door, they have a lot to say. And then our seventh graders will be able to be next year. So talking about like giving back and, and being able to pass the torch. So I hope that this is something that. So I hope that this is something that we can continue every single year. We are late in the game this year, but, you know, the things happen. Um but I'm super excited because I feel like um like like Erica said, like, students lose their voice in school. We don't do that intentionally, but it happens. And we need to be able to listen to them and for them to say stuff to us because if they don't get the opportunity to verbalize, they are going to let you know through their behavior and their actions. So um I'm hoping that this is something that will spread throughout the 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 student body and people get excited for it because I'm excited for it.
And I just want to add to that, that that will spread. Once they see, at the high school, the students get really into it. At this point, you know, we've done this several years, um and our senior leaders are very visible. They're out, they're in a lot of different things, right? Um the application process is an interview process. You know, we did that, once again, just for experience. They actually come in dressed up, uh they've completed the application, and they come in dressed up and they get interviewed. Why do you want to do this? Why? So that's something that the kids talk about, you know, everything that they do, they talk about. They're excited about the opportunity to, you know, to interview. Once they get in and then they're doing the different activities throughout the district, again, it's talked about, they tweet it out. They, uh we tweet, but they Instagram, you know. So it's those types of things, it's out there and they continuously put it out there. It is an exciting, it's exciting because students have an opportunity to express themselves, find their voice. We call it find their voice, but it's, you know, they're they're expressing themselves, they're talking about what's important to them. And in leadership programs, once again, you know, it's something that we as school districts need to do better, give, you know, kids more opportunities to get into leadership roles and practice those young budding skills. You know, you're not going to be perfect the first time, but the more you do it, the more comfortable you become with it. And that was the whole point in putting something together to begin with, you know, as far as our schools were concerned. Give these kids an opportunity, a format, a vehicle, to practice being a leader, you know, and then give them an opportunity to talk about what worked and what didn't work. That's the whole point of these vent sessions. I want to vent on a regular basis about what works in my building, what doesn't. Like, who am I venting to? Who am I talking to? Or I'm talking to other colleagues, right? So that's what this is, it gives them an opportunity to do that. It is very exciting, you know, and I, every year, um students are talking about what's coming next as far as a senior leadership program. So as far as your middle school leadership program, it'll catch fire, you know, kids will want to be in it. Um a very big important part is just making sure you have the right person on board to to push it. You know, that's who you have on the boat, right? Like, who is going to be the one to help put this together and keep it going? That'll make it really, you know, work too, so good luck with that.
No, I'm a lovely question, I'm actually excited. To um, we've been talking about getting our kids that have our voice. We've had our whole line, um student, uh president, vice president, come sit with us and our full well student vice president of the student body come and sit at this table and tell us what's going on in school and everything. But last year, the state pushed a policy that every high school now has to have a member of the student body on their board. I want to know what they're thinking, I want to know what their thoughts on on the different things that we're deciding on are. So this feels like a great jumping off point to hear what they're thinking. So I really, I'm so excited about this, it's great, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And next we have um Mrs. Pierce, she is our Director of Special Education, and she's going to give you an update on CareSalus. Uh, you know, we adopted CareSalus in our district uh during the the pandemic, and she has uh some wonderful news for you.
So we used some of our Essar uh grant funds to um bring CareSalus into our district. Uh so CareSalus is an organization uh that is national. Um the purpose of CareSalus is related to help connect people with mental health services easier and more directly. I don't know if anybody has experience with attempting to get mental health services by yourself. Um it's chaotic, like my experience has been going on my insurance's website and looking at the litany of people who are approved and doing my best guess, I mean, sending twenty emails and being like, I wonder if somebody is gonna, you know, email me back ever. Um so I actually use CareSalus for a number of my households um as well. Uh like seventy percent because we needed it and thirty percent going through CareSalus for like market research. Um and it was extremely efficient and easy, like within a week, I had an appointment set up for the number of my family with that person, which is just like a huge difference from trying to navigate that on my own. Um so right now, um the slide showed you like there's about three hundred schools in the country using CareSalus, um over three million students. And um it's available to any household member of any student in Mount Holly, right? So if you have a student in Mount Holly and a sibling who doesn't go to Mount Holly to need services, you can go through CareSalus to get services for um that family member. Um so that's a great addition to it, um being, you know, for our students, but also for our families and community members. Um so there is a few different ways you can go without getting services. One is to search yourself, um and there is a link on our website to the Mount Holly um information page. So you'll put in some information, you'll, you know, identify why you're looking for services. Um and then it will get handed off to um a person working for CareSalus who's called a care companion. Um you can designate your um language of preference, and so if somebody fluent in that language will be the person that reaches out to you. Um they'll reach out to you by phone, they will send you a text message, and they'll also send you an email. Sometimes that email goes to junk mail, so if you don't get something within about twenty-four hours, check there. Um and then they will um identify agencies or organizations in the proximity that you give them. So if you give them a twenty-five mile radius versus a five mile radius, like they'll lurk, look within the parameters that you give them. And they will very quickly identify agencies who have availability to support you or whomever um has that need, talk to you about your preferences and a provider and help set up an appointment. Um the other way that you can get connected with a care companion and go through that whole process is by somebody in the school district, um initiating what's called a warm handoff on your behalf. Um so if you want to initiate services but aren't really sure how, all of the administrators in the district, central office, and school-based, all of our school counselors, um and our school social workers and school psychologists, all have accounts to initiate warm handoffs. You can contact any of them and request one, and they'll just go through those preliminary questions with you to make sure that you get connected with the right person. Ask you to click right as you were popping my allergies. Um this slide just kind of shows the chaos that is navigating mental health services and why CareSalus makes that so much easier. Um so go to, go ahead and go to the next slide. So we're gonna talk about our district data. Um CareSalus tracks their key performance indicators. I'm not gonna go through every single number on this list, I'll point out a couple highlights, right? So um forty-eight percent of the cases that um start with like a warm handoff or self referrals are resulting in appointments into care, um which is a pretty amazing number. In talking to CareSalus, the um average percent for a district of our size is about twenty-five to thirty percent. Um so I think it's great that the people who are reaching out, like really want to um work through that process. Um I think it also uh is a credit to our staff members, primarily our school-based um counselors, school psychologists, and school social workers, because they can see where people are in the process. They don't get all the nitty-gritty, but they can see like, have you been contacted, are you not reaching out, right? And they can then follow up with those people who are interested to make sure that they know somebody's trying to reach out and and help bridge that connection. Um one other metric that I thought was really alarming, um in a good way, is that um the CareSalus has helped save our district staff about twenty-six hundred modes of communication over the course of the year in setting all of this up, right? And they equated that to um about seventy-two total hours. So if we think about somebody having a full-time job, right? That's about two full weeks of that person only helping navigate and connect people with mental health services and following up with that. Um so that is time that has gone back to our district staff to be able to reallocate, we're like supporting students on the ground or other things that they may be tasked with. Here's some demographics in terms of who is accessing our services. So you see um gender, age, and ethnicity are at the top. Um and then at the bottom, it just talks about the community needs. Um so it, CareSalus helps connect for both substance use um and treatment as well as mental health. So these are just what came up in the searches um and referrals for services um from both our, you know, community at large as well as any referrals that we would have made. And then this, um I believe this is the final slide, shows us the um top ten insurances that people are using. This helps CareSalus to assess their providers, to know if they have enough providers like meeting the insurance needs and whether or not they need to continue to like build their bank of folks. Um and then on the right, you see the top ten providers to which people have um been referred and um started services or supports with those folks. This is posted on the website, so if you are, you know, wanting to look from home, this is the information you can use to do so. Um and are there any questions about CareSalus in our district?
Uh one thing that I would add is um, you know, it's always cool to see like something happened over time and how it evolves. Like I, I remember us being in the auditorium and we had um a presentation that was like day zero. Um but to see how many people are using this um is is pretty fascinating to see. I would say the next level of this would be to get this in the hands of people that um are not using it but need it. Um and you can see like, we put, post this on our website and the board, I can email this presentation to you. Like you can see certain demographics that that we need to target because um when you look at our discipline data, uh you can tell pockets of students that um may be suffering from some of those um anxiety, depression, those are the top two. Um so it it's it's important to continue to to provide those opportunities. And then I would say another part of this, another level would be to be able to have people on our staff that can follow up, you know? Um so we have in our budget, you know, we're going to explore like hiring more social workers that can work that aren't affiliated with the child study team because uh that they are definitely overworked to be able to follow up with some of these uh cases. But we need people that will be able to follow up and work with families. Um and I think that that will broaden this uh impact a lot, a huge impact will be able to uh happen if we can have people that follow up. So um just, you know, some of the grants that you see coming up in the next month or so, uh they will help with that as well. So um I just know that as a district, we all recognize the importance of mental health uh more than even, you know, going through the pandemic as we were going through it. But now I can tell you that uh it's evident that mental health is important. And I tell, the message from administration to our staff is that's priority, that's number one. Because if you don't have a regulated um environment where students feel safe and they feel like they can take academic risks, uh those settings are are important to have, right? So if you don't have that, then that's when the low achievement comes. So our push is to make sure that our environment is conducive to optimal learning so we can see some progress with our student achievement. Um so over overarching, I say that my motto now is we're gonna build this from the inside out, um and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you, Tiffany.
For public comment on agenda items only.
This is open, uh ninety eleven five, about this, probably in any language, right? All languages in the world. And second is, what they say about bullying, I was looking at the list and see anything about bullying?
And then obviously, if you didn't see that data on there, then people didn't go to, I mean, they don't express like what happens in a session. Um so that wasn't one of the the uh categories that we're on.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? The annual approvals as a consent agenda numbers one through. Anybody, what are you saying? That motion, can I have a second?
A second?
Can I roll call this? Yes, Ms. Yadi.
Yes.
Ms. Mishinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Baka.
Yes, with an abstention on number three.
I have a motion to adopt the minutes from April twenty-sixth and the April twenty-sixth executive session. Thanks, yeah. Ms. Yadi.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I would like the President to report for the same reason. Excellent, and Ms. Teganyan, not in the seat, thank you. And you please have a break.
And uh the approval of PN O one through PN O five, ISS O one, OB O one through OB O nine, and VA O one through VA twenty-one.
This is the agenda.
Motion.
Okay. Can I roll call this?
Yes.
Ms. Mishinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Baka.
Yes, thank you.
General public session, um public participation shall be governed by the following rules. The participant who is recognized by the presiding officer, that's me, and must pre-schedule an announcement of his or her place of residence and affiliation if appropriate. The presiding officer may limit each statement made by each participant to a specific duration limit of nine minutes. Right into the presiding officer. Ask four question board members individually.
Hello, this is open ninety eleven five, I just want to know what's the status of the ESL program, how that goes?
The ESL program?
Yeah, the the, you guys speaking Spanish to English.
Yeah, the, the, you guys speak in Spanish through English. How that program goes this year?
Um, it, it, I mean, it's the same thing as every year. We have kids that come in. Actually, I don't have numbers of people move out. So we can do that in the summertime. We can make sure that, uh, we can, uh, post the data of how many students move out. But an exciting thing that is coming down the road for the lightening right now, I can't think of what date it is, but it's in the next, I think it's, um, May fifteenth. We're gonna have a, um, uh, English as a Second Language Day where parents can come in. It's gonna be completely in Spanish for those parents that don't speak English. And we're gonna have a lot of people come in just to talk about some of the services that are available to them. So, uh, we try to do as much as we can for the ESL population.
I'd also like to add that our, I think I believe our top two, um, other languages besides English are Portuguese and Spanish, right? So we have a STEM fair on May seventeenth, which is gonna be awesome in this building from six to nine, I believe. Displays and everything will be both English and Spanish. And there will be Hispanic heritage table in the main room.
I appreciate it. Uh, thinking of, what if the student wanna learn, uh, let's say wanna learn a different language? Let's say, okay, I'm Spanish. I wanna know, uh, you know, what's the difference between the Spanish from America and the Spanish from Barcelona and Spain? Do you, do you?
So, uh, our world language here in the middle school is Spanish. Uh, they talk about different, you know, uh, Latin countries, Hispanic countries, Hispanic heritage. Uh, I don't think that they go into different dialects because it's hard enough for them to pick up just the basics. So that's, that's how we handle that.
And I think for this, I want to thank to, uh, what, thirty-two parents that keep quiet to me and thanked me about the last time, the last BO meeting. They appreciated, they had some closure. But I still have one final question, or like I had before. Can Leah, the daughter, can go with me, you know, to the next BO meeting with no problem?
She can come to any meeting.
Oh, no, I'm just asking.
We have invited her.
Okay. I just, I, like, I said, it, it does help. No, but, you know, I'll be cool just to let what's going on. I'm just a journalist who studied in law, became a lawyer by the time I was in school. You know, I don't go to school this month, but I came from the United City, went straight to, to high school. But my brother did, everything did right, went to here. And I live right on that alley street. And I appreciate everything, you know? This mother is our appreciation teacher. I appreciate every teacher at this school for everything. And I hope my videos are, in addition to the video, we spread the news.
Yes, we appreciate it. Thank you.
And, uh, one final, are you gonna have a chat or a memory chat for, uh, our student that, you know, departed?
I don't think that we've discussed it. I know that they did have a section where a lot of kids brought in flowers and stuffed animals and they, um, they did.
Yeah, so, uh, we, we are going to acknowledge her in the yearbook. Uh, we did have a moment where students did have a memorial for Felicia. Uh, you know, we had to put a timeframe on that because we just had to make sure that the emotional health of, of all the students involved had a time to process. But, uh, there will be something in the, in the yearbook. And I believe that they did something for the second day of the play. I went to the first day.
Did they do the first day too?
I must have handled it. So they, they, they have honored her in, in certain, certain.
Yeah, one of that, what happened to the, to the bathroom? That would be off, left, uh, off limits or just like?
The what?
The bathroom.
The bathroom?
No, the bathroom, the, you know, that we could, they would found.
Yeah, we wouldn't do that.
It would be?
We wouldn't do a memorial there.
No, 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 I mean, or you gonna put an off limits, I mean, or there won't be any hunting, nothing like that?
It's open.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Last comments for executive.
No, finally, no comments, but, um, thank you to the honor team for the very detailed. Never anything.
Little ditto to everything. Um, I'm gonna give a shameless plug for our, for our STEM fair on seventeen at six o'clock in this building. There will be robotics, there will be the, um, the physical society, which is not a middle school. They're putting on, thank you, they are putting on a piece of the play. Somebody can watch that. The percussion is gonna be in the music room. They play on the drums, so that's super fun. The science fair will be there. There are so many activities and things to come out and say, please, everyone come. Come see what these students have been doing. Some of these make pizza and pizza and free pizza.
Teacher Appreciation Day. It's Tuesday, so happy appreciation day, teacher appreciation. And next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. So we won't see the, uh, or the teachers won't hear from you until the next board meeting. But obviously, the backbone of this district, so, uh, shout out to all the teachers.
Little, um, they are the moms that we can't be with or the dads?
And the.
Someone with their dads. Um, okay, can I have a motion to go into executive session? No matter the disclosure, which constitutes an unwarranted vision.